I call to order the special meeting, March 31st, 2016 at 5:00 PM. We have Mr. Tim Hockens fed up for the Thomas Nelson High School Phase 3 submission of bids by construction manager.
As you all recall, I'm sure when we brought to you the selection of, I guess it was when we brought to you the selection of BCD, like some time ago, I think, maybe close to a year ago now, it's last April, your all's wishes were that BCD act as the construction manager and not as a constructor on these projects. And at the ELC, we were successful in getting bids on all the bid packages. At Thomas Nelson High School, we bid it about three weeks ago, Michael, is that right? Around three weeks ago, we had three bid packages, concrete and carpentry, masonry, and acoustical and drywall that we received no bids on. We also, we've since rebid that, and the bid date is Tuesday, April 12th, 2 o'clock right here in this room. In addition to those three that we received no bids on, we are rebidding doors and hardware and some other miscellaneous things because there was a bidder that participated, but they participated incorrectly. They sent their bid to the wrong location. And had they sent it to the correct location, that they would have been the low bid and it would have saved the district about $20,000. I think Mr. Orr talked to you folks and you all allowed us to rebid that in hopes of saving that $20,000 again, and we do expect to be able to do that. As of today, we're not certain that we'll get, receive bids from other bidders. We have had some interest. I know there've been some board members actually suggest leads to us to try to source bidders, and we appreciate that. And I know I've communicated with Michael many times since three weeks ago, Mr. Orr's been involved, and I'll talk to you folks. I don't think today, we're still 100% confident we're going to get bids on those three bid packages. We may, we may, but we're not 100% confident that we will, so we're here to ask tonight that you consider allowing BCD to bid on those packages to ensure that we get a bid. I can turn it over to Michael, and if you have any specific questions about who he's contacted and why maybe there are concerns, et cetera, I think he can address those certainly, certainly can address that better than I can. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you might have for me, though.
I mean, it sounds like what it boils down to is the size of the project. From a dollar perspective, is just not something that some of these companies are looking for because they're going after bigger projects now. It's just supply and demand.
My guess is that, I think I talked to Michael, I think he thinks that might be part of it. I think the project at Thomas Nelson's about 6,000 square feet, and I think of 6,000, I mean, the rest of the school's 150,000 square feet. The auditorium's 6,000. That seems to me that that could be part of it. I'm not for sure, I don't know, any of us are absolutely certain why. I know that there is a lot more work out there than what there was, you know, in the past, the last several projects we bid, and we just, I think for a number of factors, have just not been folks interested in that particular project. That may change, on the 12th, we may get bids. My concern is if we continue to wait and it drags out, I want, I personally want, I think you all want, that auditorium to be open in August of 2017. And, you know, we've been talking, the school's been underway since about 2008, been open since its fourth year now. I guess that would be in its 60th year, we would open with a new auditorium. I think I'm saying that right? And I personally just want to make sure that that happens. I think what we're asking you to do tonight is provide us a safety net for bidding on the 12th, so we can be sure, feel certain that we will in fact have a bid that you can choose to award on the following, two days later, the 14th.
Tim, just going back to Tim's question, I know there's some level of uncertainty, but we have heard back from at least one of the successful bidders on the early learning center, is I understand that they, between the time the two bid packages went out, they just got more work and decided they didn't want to take on an additional project.
I think that's M&amp;J Construction, correct?
Right, but they're still toying around with it, so.
Well, and so that kind of goes back to the supply and demand piece. I mean, you know, the economy has started to improve, there is more construction going on. We can see it over in the industrial park, the bluegrass, over by the bluegrass parkway. You know, there's only so many skilled laborers that can really do a good job as to go around, it sounds like. I think Stephen, whenever I saw him at KSBA, Stephen alluded to that a little bit. Is that kind of what you're hearing as well, Michael?
It's definitely a supply and demand thing, you know, people are able to work closer to home, wherever home is.
Yeah.
You know, if you're in Jefferson County, and you're a successful Jefferson County, and there's lots of contractors in Jefferson County, but they're getting the quantity of what they need to fulfill their need, you know, the manpower they have is busy.
Well, it's a little bit flip-flop from 2006 and '07 and '08, whenever we were working to construct it, and they were coming out of the woodworks to bid and undercutting each other because they needed the work.
Absolutely.
So this is a little bit, we're on the backside of that opportunity now.
Unfortunately, it's the first time we've been in this position since '92.
Wow. The only thing, I, like I said, I'm retired now, but I still contact the union hall. I stay in touch. And the union hall that I belong to, we have 600 travelers from all over the United States in because we can't man the job. So that's just our part of it. That being said, I don't know where the work is. I know some of it is on the deal downtown Wolf, but I know there's a lot of work out. I know they're redoing powerhouses, I know they're done. So that's big work, it's big, it's big money.
Yeah.
If, if it wasn't for that, me knowing that, I would, I would have a problem with what we're going through here. But on my end, checking, there's work, there's, there's a lot of work out there. Ford is doing all this work out there.
Yeah.
I can't say nothing to how much masonry's been done, I can't say how much drywall's been done, but I know on our end, we're snowed under.
Well, so it sounds like what this would do for us is, it gives us, you said safety net, I heard what Michael was saying, yeah. And I, I mean, to me, our priority ought to be making sure that that auditorium is open as soon as possible. I mean, our goal is August 17th, if it's done, May of 17, that's all that much better. But we want to make sure that it's available for them as soon as possible.
And I'm also.
What about that one fellow that the Berger outfit that couldn't get a bond? Did we ever go any further with that?
And I was gonna mention, that individual, we did have a person that said that they would be interested in bidding the job, but they have to bid underneath another contractor. And I will tell you, it's been about a week ago that I talked to Michael, but Michael said that he'd be someone I'd be glad, that individual would be someone I'd be glad to work with on the project. We haven't talked since then, but, you know, I feel certain Michael would be open to that. I would also say, remind you all that, I don't know if we've talked about this previously, but I know, you know, if you allow Michael and BCD to bid the projects, and you get another bidder, and the pricing is close, you know, I think you've got some flexibility there, especially with the relationship you've got with, for over 20 years with BCD, and they understand your all's wishes, I think, they would work with you, and if you elected to go with another bidder, even though they might not be the low bid. As long as, I think, obviously you want, you want to spend district dollars as wisely as you can, but if you place some value on them not doing the construction and managing the construction, and the prices are close enough, I mean, I've talked to Michael, I think, I assume he's still standing by those comments, that he's not going to contest that if you were to offer or approve a bid that's not the low bid, if you're more comfortable not awarding it to BCD when you have multiple bids. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
He just, I do think, they just want, like we do, they want to make sure the work gets done, gets done on time, and this will just provide us a safety net.
What's the rest on this?
Well, I mean, from a timing perspective, I mean, we're getting ready to go into the fifth year of Thomas Nelson. And I know Thomas Nelson, their arts programs, drama, music and so forth, they've had to use other facilities, or use the gym, which is not ideal for them. So, you know, one of the commitments that I think this board's made, as well as previous boards, whenever the makeup was different, was to make sure that Thomas Nelson had the facilities similar to what Nelson County High School has, which is making sure they've got an auditorium. If we wait too much longer, if we were to say, well, let's just, let's wait and see what happens, and if we end up not getting bids back on this second round, and we have to go through this again, what we're going to start seeing is the potential that it won't be finished for the start of that August of 17 school year.
Couple other considerations, too. There's possibility that the interest rates, interest rates could go down, they could. Again, I think they're more likely to go up if you follow what the Fed says, and if the Fed raises rates, that's going to trickle down and affect bond rates.
As well as the cost of the work, too, because of more work coming in for the communities.
Very, very well could. The, just, I don't know if this will be affected, but maybe not, but Nelson County, we just learned today, was approved for a $220 million construction project with automotive supplier. They're going to begin construction, I think it may. Another consideration, time consideration, is when we approve the ELC bids, remember, our plan is to sell, have one bond issued for both each projects. When we've begun construction, if you drive by the ELC, you'll see that there's excavation underway, and there's work underway, and we have, we've spent some money on that project, not a lot, but that's going to pick up as we go through the summer, through the late spring, I guess. And we haven't sold bonds yet, because we wanted to put all that one bond issue to pay the fees associated with not the issue once. So at some point, we're going to need money in the bank to make those bond payments, and we're, we've got money to cover it. We're not going to bounce any construction checks, but we do have a $3 million project there, that, you know, we are going to spend a lot of money over the next few months, so we wouldn't want to wait too long to have the bond proceeds in the account to write those checks out, if that makes sense. And that's so we can minimize fees and just have a, just more efficient operation, so that's just another consideration, cost consideration for you.
Tim, let me ask something, though. Does this mean, let me, let me think that, I'm thinking out loud, okay? Does this mean if we don't okay this now, or with the next, October or something, that the project won't start until we okay all this, the bids? Is that what this means, that we can't start the projects?
I'm going to want to defer to Michael on that. I know you do have bids that you, we would be bringing to you to approve on the night of the 14th.
Yeah.
That we received about three weeks ago, but I think those are good for 60 days, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're waiting to approve them all together, so that's.
But that's not a hack to.
Well, I'm going to go back to Michael on that. The, again, we've got concrete and carpentry, we have masonry, we have acoustical and drywall. I'm assuming you could start excavating, and we could approve contracts at various, at different dates, I guess that's possible.
If you don't have one bid, though, you shut the job down.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll be very long on this one. I'm not quite sure why we're hung up on not doing this, because it doesn't mean that we're saying BCD is getting a bid. It means that we're just saying, we've got to have a safety net here to keep this moving forward at a timely manner. It may be that Joe's House of Masonry does decide to bid on this one because they've had some, some work capacity free up, and they may come in with an incredibly low bid and be one of the best masonry people in the world. And I'm sure that Michael and the folks that manage our construction project will look at that and go, hey, that's one less thing we've got to worry about, we'll just manage the workflow that's happening, and they're dealing with the masonry. You know, we can sit here, we can, you know, be concerned about, let's wait, let's see what comes in. All this does is give us a safety net here. This just allows us that if it happens, that nobody else has the workers to do this, we've got someone else that'll say, you know what, we'll bid on it, and we'll find it, and we'll commit to finding the workers to do this.
And I was, I think, I know, again, I've had some referrals and some contractors, and I believe every contractor that's been referred to me, Michael has contacted, they were already on their list. So I don't think there's been any contractor that's been shared with us that they were not already familiar with. I, I may have that wrong, but I don't think so. I think Mr. Orr and I actually checked those, and they were all on the contractor list that they send their information to from the very beginning. Those folks just have opted not to bid it because of the workload that they have, for whatever reason.
Oh, I'm not for, I'm not saying I'm not for starting, I mean, doing this. You know what?
Yeah.
I'm not for what you just said, I mean.
I'm just wondering why we're questioning so much.
Questioning what, though?
Questioning, saying that we would allow BCD to be one of the potential bidders.
Well, in my world of contracting, you don't do it. You don't, you don't manage it and work it, too. That's just what I'm saying.
Well, and I.
And I'm all for anybody, yes, a conflict of interest. That's just the way the contracting world works.
And so we've tried that.
Yeah, but I'm for waiting until, when is it, April something? When do you?
The bid should do on April 12th at 2 o'clock.
Okay. Then I'm for waiting till April 12th at 2 o'clock. I'm not going to say automatically if this happens and this won't happen. I want to get down to the very last, what we can, if we can make it work, make it work. If not, then we'll have to go plan B.
Well, so.
I mean, that's just what I said.
But if, but if we allow the bid to occur, and nobody else bids again a second time, then we're spinning a cycle. I mean, that, that's logical, I'm saying that way.
I just find it very, very hard to believe that you are having so much trouble finding contractors to do this work. I, I do, I have a hard time with that.
Well, it's not BCD having a hard time, it's the school district has put out bids to anybody that wants to bid on it, and people have said on these bid packages that we, whether we don't have the bonding capacity, or whether we've got other work that's doing, I mean, it's not BCD standing in, in the middle of something, trying not to find people. In fact, it sounds like BCD has tried to find people. And I understand, you know, I hear a couple of people making, saying comments about, you know, conflicts of interest, and I can understand that, because we've got to be very careful about that.
Well, it is.
But what I will say is, for 20 years, we've had a relationship with BCD, and it seems like every time, it's worked out fairly well. Our Thomas Nelson High School construction project came in under budget. Whenever there were issues, BCD always worked with us to resolve them, as did Studio Kramer and CMTA and the other partners, so.
Well, that's what a manager's supposed to do. A manager's supposed to be able to handle the, the union problems, or this problem or that, because that's what we did. They're supposed, that's what they get paid for. All I'm saying is, in our world, what we managed was, you didn't do it. I mean, my company's been in business 30 years, and we, you just didn't do it. You don't do it. But if that's what we have to do, that's fine. But I want to wait till we can't wait any longer before that name is signed on that dotted line. I want to see if we can find whatever's going on.
So, Michael, how long does it take, in your estimate, to do the total construction work out at Thomas Nelson High School?
I'm expecting a little less than a year.
Okay. So if we were to wait till April 12th, then whenever we tack in the KDE piece approvals, I assume there's still some more of that, we try and get the bond sale piece done, I mean, we are pushing right at a year, and that's if everything goes smooth.
Well, if you don't get bids on April 12th, then we have to go back.
Then you have to go back again.
So we're probably looking, I'm guessing, for early May to bid the job. If you don't get a bid on a bid package on April 12th, you may get one off.
So, so the point, the point I'm trying to make on this, then, is we have nothing to lose by going on and allowing BCD to potentially bid on, because if there is no other entity that responds to these bid packages for April 12th, we're going to have to go through the cycle again.
And if we go through the cycle again.
We're going to have to go through it again.
So we're interested in going through this cycle multiple times?
I'm just saying, we need to wait till April the 12th or 14th.
Well, so we can wait for that, but again, just follow through this thought process. If we get nobody other than BCD.
On April the 12th, then that's fine.
Okay, so if we do get other people.
Whoa, whoa!
You're not going to get, if you don't say it's, if you don't say it's okay tonight, if you don't say it's okay tonight, BCD won't turn in the bid. I mean, so then you're going to be on the 12th with nobody. All you're doing is saying it's okay, and on the 12th, you can make whatever decision you want.
So on the 12th.
If you've got four bids in on a bid package.
And what's the difference, if it doesn't make a difference, then what's the difference whether we allow you to bid it or not bid it now versus waiting until April 12th?
Because it's going to add another month, so, because we can't, then you got to re-advertise it, and another thing that happens is if people do bid it, they get, no, that's not, if you keep rebidding a job, people get disenchanted with it, they think there's a.
That there's a problem.
There's a problem. There is no problem with our school district. You all are awesome customers, you don't want to present that image, but, you know, it's 100% your all's choice, how you like to handle it.
Well, let me, let's say, for example, April 12th, we don't get a bid, they don't approve you guys to bid. Are we, do we risk the original bids that?
Oh, well, they could expire also, that's correct.
I haven't calculated that date, honestly, I don't, do you know off the top of your head when, when those bids came in exactly, and we go back and look?
I don't know.
You know, and, and if we can meet the requirements, because they're only good for 60 days, correct?
That's true.
You know, so those bids would not be good, we'd have to go back and bid all bid packages again, if we couldn't get it done in time for those bids to be approved within the 60-day timeframe.
Well, you still have the option to stop it.
Yes, you can stop on April 12th.
If this goes on, and we're saying we approve, on the 12th, we still have the option to stop it.
We still have the upper hand.
Right. It's not given to nobody yet.
You can reject all bids.
What he's doing is, what they're doing is, we said in the beginning that BCD could not bid any project.
That's right.
What it'll do, it'll go in and all these people try to get them and all that. On the 12th, you have to say that, yes, BCD can bid, or no, they can't. But you have the right to stop them.
Well, I think, I think what we, what we need to do is say that they can bid, because on the 12th, if we haven't already given permission for BCD, BCD to bid, they will not have prepared a bid, we won't have one. So we, we'll have to choose from what is there, or if there are none, that we have to start that clock again. I mean, we, I, I think what we're, I know, what we're asking you to do is to decide whether or not to consider, to allow BCD to submit the bids so that we have a, so that we know we'll have something to look at come April 12th. I don't think we can wait until April 12th to say, oh, we didn't get any bids, now we'll take one from BCD.
That is what I meant.
I don't, I don't think that's, we can't do it that way.
But you could say, we will allow them to bid, and then if you don't like the fact that they're the only bidder that day, you can reject those bids, you don't have to worry.
That's what I said. That's what we're trying to say.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, it didn't sound like that, I'm sorry.
Well, that's what, if you, like, we have to receive.
If you say October tonight is not a done deal.
That's right. And then if we don't have any bids by April the whatever, and you've got your bid, then that's the second, that's our second alternative.
This is, this is my concern, and that is, if we allow this, okay, then I want some kind of assurance that we are still going to do our due diligence, and that we are still going to find somebody.
Let me.
And, you know, I, I think that that is something that needs to be very closely monitored.
Let me, let me speak to that if I may, and I'm going to back up just a little bit and say, we, we do have, we have good, solid work that's been done in the district over the years. And I have only been around five and a half years, but at five and a half years, we've done a lot of projects that BCD's been involved in, and they, the work has been solid and effective. Now, are there times when we come back and say, this isn't working like we want it to? We have certainly done that. Michael and his team, Stephen with the architect and design team, we've all worked really well together, I think, to watch, to make sure that the end product is what we know will last and stand, and when we've had problems, we've worked through them. But on top of all of those guys is, we have our team, we have Kevin Mattingly, who's our maintenance supervisor, we have Todd Sanders, who is our physical support director. If you think Tim takes naps, and I know you're not saying that, but Tim is incredibly vigilant and will wear people out if he doesn't think we're getting what we should get. I understand that we have concerns about the fox in the hen house, but this, this relationship's been successful for a long time, and I think it's appropriate to give credit to that and say, we know this can work, we understand, we wanted a different priority, and if we can come through with the other bids, we've expressed a preference for other bids, and I think that's perfectly reasonable. This does not exclude that opportunity. But I, I don't want us to be in a position, and as a superintendent, I'm just going to say, I don't want you to be in a position where we risk losing the bids that we have, we risk the cost going up because of productivity in the economy, or the interest rates that are out there. So that's why we're asking you to do this. Obviously, it's your decision, and we'll implement whatever decision you make, but we feel like it's in the best interest of the school district, of the students at Thomas Nelson, and your bottom line financially, so that's, that's why we make that decision.
And these, these bids get posted on the district website, published in the local paper, and I assume there are other methods of publicizing them.
We talked about this, I think, Michael probably, if I'm wrong here, but I hear from, the, where these contractors, you folks that are in the contracting business have some familiarity with that, and I sure know this, too, contractors don't wait for an ad in the Kentucky Standard.
They're not going to read it.
Let's take it, these ads go in the Dodge Report. That's where all these contractors, and other sources like that, that's where they find this work, and that, that will be advertised there as well, and that's where these, plus, and I don't know if we've sent this to you, I'm sure we'd be glad to send it to you, Michael and BCD have a list of dozens of contractors that have been contacted about this job, I mean, dozens. You know, I think in some cases, there's over 20 contractors for a specific bid package, maybe more than that. I mean, it's a lengthy list, we'll be glad to send you that list of contractors. Again, I think, you know, we did have some suggested contractors that I don't personally, hadn't personally heard of, you know, but when we checked it against the list, where folks had already been contacted, they were already on there, they'd already been contacted.
My point in that question is, is that there's a lot of activity being done to try and find potential bidders. It's not that it's just being said, well, let's put out this bid package, and we'll see if anybody's even interested.
He's, first time ever, I have a brother-in-law's in sign business in Lexington, he has a big, big project, malls all over the country, right? Well, I called his COO, I guess, and asked him, any contractors in Lexington you can think of that might be interested in the following three bid packages? And he sent me a couple. I know Michael will bring to talk to those folks, I don't know if they're going to bid on the job or not, but we are trying to find anybody, we, I've called everybody I can think of, I promise you that. That was the, the only, only lead I got was from my brother-in-law, because he's, he's in a, in a, in the construction business at a pretty large or pretty high level, but I don't know if that's going to come to fruition for us or help us, but, you know, this is, we have been turning over every stone we can find and trying to find bidders. Again, BCD has sent this to dozens and dozens of contractors to bid on.
What, maybe, I'm remiss in assuming that you all know the process I go through, so I'll tell you what that is. We have the resources that Tim mentioned, so there's about five different contractor data resources, construction data resource, Dodge, Builders Exchange and others. We list your, all of your projects have always been listed with all those resources, and that's a primary way that people get interested. We also have our own in-house data that Tim's mentioning, and we send out, as soon as a job goes out to bid, we send out emails to all those people. So for masonry, for example, we probably have 30 individual contractors that we send a personal email to. We make personal phone calls also to people, asking them, trying to generate interest in your project, because we know that's good for you, and it's fiscally responsible for us to go out and find, get those people interested in your projects. And because of the current economic conditions, we've done more personal phone calls than we've ever done before. It's just that important to get people to know that the project's out there and that it's available for them to look at.
I still can't help but think that there's got to be some reason as to, I mean, this is a great project. This is a great project for someone to jump in on. I just find it very, very difficult to wrap my head around how you've contacted all of these people and no. these people and nobody wants us. I don't get it.
It's, it's, I think you're asking for a reason, and the only reason I'm aware of, and the reason I get over and over is, we've got all the work that we can handle right
By going on and allowing BCD to be a potential bidder, we have nothing to lose. We, we have everything to gain from a time standpoint and potentially a money standpoint, like Superintendent Ward was just saying, if April 12th rolls around and there is only one bid response, and it is BCD, we've still got the option on that day to say, we reject the bid. Now, if we do that, then we've got to also be willing to potentially lose out on every other bid package, because it's probably getting pretty close to the 60-day guaranteed that those bid packages are good, the ones we've already gotten in. Also, what it does, I'll say again, is it potentially pushes us back on being able to complete this project in the timeframe that we've said we'd like to have it be done. I know, Ms. Berry, you've said many a times that that has got to be a priority, that auditorium, because of the arts piece that you, you chant in at times. So, I mean, I would simply say, we've got to see what we can do. If we get other bid responses, I know, I'm confident with the relationship we've had with BCD in the past, that you all are going to beat the bushes for us. You know, it sounds like this Dodge report, if I'm saying that right, is the bible of construction bidders, that that's something that they all look at. It is advertised in the local paper, whether people look at it or not, or on the Nelson County Gazette, whether people look at it or not, and, as well as on the district website. So we have absolutely nothing to lose, because come April 12th, we'll either have a bunch of bids we can choose from, we'll have potentially one bid, even if BCD does decide to bid on it, or if we have no bids again, we're really up a creek without a paddle, because at that point then, that construction project's not going anywhere.
I understand.
I want to say that, you know, I'm in no hurry on this. If we got to redo it, I'm in no hurry. I want the job done as fair a price and as good as quality as we can get. I don't want a mess.
I don't want a good quality. I want it the best quality.
You're right.
And I think when you, what, what I'm thinking, I was just, do it the right way, transparency-wise, the whole works. I mean, that's just a way, maybe, that's just the way my companies always do it.
I think we have the right on the 12th to pull it back. I think we need to go on with it, and on the 12th, if we don't like it, we'll stop it. Now, that is just go on with it, in my opinion. Let's see who comes in. Let's see who walks in the door, and on the 12th, if we don't like it, we stop it.
When do those bids come in? Do they come in to you?
Come in here.
No, they come into the school district.
They come in here?
They're still bids, receive your, I advise you to come, they're interesting. You know, we're still bid, receive us, school district are open. One of the things that the Department of Education expects this, they have regulations that allows what you all are doing, it's not abnormal.
I just want to know who unseals them.
And, and there's typically 15, 20 folks in here watching.
And in fact, if I remember correctly, on multiple procurement process, even ones that are delivered prior to the date and time are still left sealed until that date and time.
They're all open until 1:00.
Whether there's one of them that shows up at 1:59 PM, or whether there were 10 of them that showed up the day before at 10 AM, they're all kept sealed, and only Tim and/or the district designated are the ones that open them up.
There's a lot of rules about it. If they show up at 2:01, because they have all the traffic, we don't accept them and don't know.
I still keep going back to the fact that we said initially that we were not going to allow BCD to bid on it. I still keep going.
You still have that option.
Yeah, but again, we're going back on what we said we would, we weren't going to do. I mean, you know what I mean? I mean, it's, again, we're going back on our own word, and that, I just, that is crawling all over me.
So have, have, have challenges changed? We're possibly changing what we're allowing to do is in the district's best interest overall. I mean, I, I've listened to what you said, Mr. Page, I'll go, I'll put out a motion that we allow BCD to participate in this set of bids, still allowing us to either accept theirs, accept someone else's, or accept none of them to come in on the 12th, or by the 12th in the deadline. So I'll make a motion to do that, because it still allows us to be in charge and in control of our own destiny.
And I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a motion to have BCD, go ahead, correct me if I'm wrong, BCD to go ahead and bid the project to be
If they desire.
If they desire to bid the project in accordance to whatever they're supposed to be.
Well, as he said, with the option, leaving the options open for the board to approve BCD, any other, or reject all the bids that are submitted at that time.
On April the 12th.
To allow BCD to bid on the project with the option for the board to approve BCD, any other, or to reject all of the bids that come in on that day.
Is it, is it, hold on.
Yes, ma'am.
To, to either allow or disallow any bid or all bids on that day?
To approve, to approve BCD.
That's our choice, no matter what the motion is.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Any other, okay.
Or to reject them all. It just leaves all the options open, it doesn't shut any option down.
Okay, and then I've got a second by Mr. Page. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No, opposed.
Heard 3-2.
Motion carried, 3-2.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Hawkins, we have a fuel contract renewal.
Yes, just one more thing on that. I would encourage you to be here on the 12th at 2:00 if you like, and to see and see the process. You might find it interesting. Hopefully it'll be interesting, because there'll be people here besides me, you know, in Studio Cream with BCD. We certainly hope that that's the case that day. We have, around the spring every year, we start to prepare or look for fuel prices, consider fuel bids, depending on our bid calendar, and we have fuel, we purchase currently through Petroleum Traders Corporation. And for the first time ever, a couple of years ago, we were, we awarded a fixed price contract. We awarded to get that again last year back to Petroleum Traders, that two-year bid, and we negotiated the price again for the second year. You have the, the option to negotiate that price, that fixed price for a final third year with Petroleum Traders, and I contacted them a week or so ago and got pricing from them, and they offered to the district fixed pricing at $1.829, $1.8294 for gas. We buy about 10,000 gallons of 87 octane a year. We buy about 150,000 gallons of diesel fuel a year at $1.8352. And I have contacted all of the folks that have bid in recent past on our diesel fuel and our gasoline, Nucamol, Petroleum Traders, DNR Oil out of Chaplain, Rogers Petroleum in Morristown, Tennessee, and Keel Oil Company out of Louisville. And Nucamol is not interested in a fixed price bid. They didn't bid at all last time, you see, no, Nucamol didn't bid at all last time. The, and I would, and honestly, you know, we'd love to deal with the local company, we really would, and they've had our bid in the past, but the last round, they didn't bid at all. Morristown, Tennessee, Rogers Petroleum gave its price, but only a variable price. Likewise for Keel, and likewise for DNR, and, you know, we suggested, and you all took our suggestion, to award fixed price bid, and I just feel like, again, there's risk with a fixed price or a variable price. There really is. I was thinking about this earlier today on your mortgage. You know, you can get a better deal on a variable price mortgage right now, but you don't have the security of knowing what it's going to be six months from now. I, I will tell you that if, if Five Star Food Mart said, Hawkins Smith, you and your four drivers and your vehicles, I'll sell you your gas for the next year at $1.85 a gallon, I'd sign up on my way home tonight. I would do that. You all might not, you all might not, but I, I think it's security for the district for the next 12 months for 150,000 gallons of diesel fuel. We were paying double this not that long ago. It could, it might be 50 cents a gallon, you know, in six months. It might be, I, I don't know, I'm not, don't have a crystal ball, but again, my, my guess is, it's, how, how can it go much lower than where it's at now? Maybe it can, but my recommendation is that you all strongly consider locking in for another year at those two prices I just quoted. Again, I talked to the other companies today that have bid recently. The only one that is even pondering fixed price is Keel at Louisville. And Dwight Kendall with Keel, the guy, two years ago, said Petroleum Traders was crazy for giving us fixed pricing. He does not, he's not confident they'll be able to get a price to us if we go through the formal bid price, process, instead of just renegotiating for a final year with Petroleum Traders. But he thinks it's possible. The other three companies not interested in fixed pricing to us, just not interested. We could budget in, in May, we'll know within a very small number of dollars, you know, a few thousand, four, $5,000 probably, what we're going to spend next year on diesel fuel, at, it's about $280,000 at $1.85 a gallon or so. And it wasn't that long ago, we were spending half a million on diesel fuel in a given year. I can, I can go back a couple of fiscal years and show you. So that's my recommendation. Certainly, if you don't want to do that, we'll come back and go through the formal bid process in May and open it up fully again. We can renew for a final third year with the Petroleum Traders. If you don't want to do that, we can go back through the full process in May. Maybe the prices be better in May, maybe they won't. You know, we just had a crystal ball, but $1.85 a gallon for a year is pretty good.
Do you know what the, what the wholesale price is of gas coming off the barge?
I went out today and looked at the NYMEX index, which is what Petroleum Traders uses to price it to us, and I, I can't remember exactly what it is per gallon. I can, you know, we, we get daily the Opus Fuel Price Index out of Louisville. That's what I used to compare every invoice we would get for fuel to, to make sure we were being charged correctly. And, and I don't know exactly what it is, I'd have to check, but I can tell you that as in any futures market, the prices are more the farther you go out, and I, I contacted Joe Nance, Joe's our fiscal agent, you all know Joe from Bond Says, they have a, an operation that is in stocks and bonds as well, and in other commodities, and his firm did not have any, any research as far as futures pricing on fuel that they felt was valuable. So, you know, I, I guess there's some, there's some risk there. I personally feel good about $1.85 a gallon for, for a year, but I'm certainly happy to do it either way. If you all would like to rebid in in May, there's risk either way.
How's the last two years, how's outcome? They don't have that week gained, lost, broken even?
Well, last year, we paid, we, we probably, honestly, Mr. Norman, we probably paid more with a fixed price than we would have if we'd, if, if we'd stuck to a variable price, honestly, because of the trend. But I think now, and what can I compare that to? It's, it's like if you're investing in stocks and you sell, it's like selling low. You know, it's what I would say, I compare that to, I, I think now the prices, I, I just can't imagine it going much lower, but again, I wish I had a crystal ball and I would tell you what I saw in it and
With the elections on, if you never know.
That's right.
Well, six to eight weeks ago, we were sitting down around 150 a gallon out at the consumer pumps, and in, what, six weeks, it's gone up 25, 30%, about 45, 50 cents a gallon, depending on where you stop. Does it mean that it won't go back down to a buck 50 after the elections, and then whoever wins can say it was because of them winning and went down? I mean, you know.
I think there's somebody you can assign to know in what you're going to pay. Somebody, I don't know exactly what that's worth, but there's comfort.
I think what you were getting at there too is, having a fixed price, we know how many miles approximately a year we travel. We know how many gallons of fuel it will take to travel those miles, and if we know how they fixed price per gallon, then we can say, for the budget, within a plus or minus of 5% maybe, or, you know, whatever math you use there, we know how much we'll spend on fuel this upcoming year. If we have a flexible pricing, or whatever it's called, and if all of a sudden it jacks up another 50 cents a gallon, we don't know what that budget might look like then.
I can tell you, 2001 to about 2012, fuel costs in the district trippers, went from 150,000 a year to about 500.
And that was about a buck 50 to close to four bucks a gallon.
Yeah, right.
So now, we got like our own pump here somewhere that we fill all of these?
We have an above ground tank.
Decan, gasoline.
Over here at the bus.
Yeah, we've got a 75, 800 gallon above ground tank. They come about, about once every two weeks during the school season, or once in the morning session, and it's a little less often for gasoline, we don't use near as much of that, but they, they make about two deliveries a month for the 10 months of school term.
It's like, it's like signing a contract with the propane people. If you want the propane, ours start out at, you know, $1.29, and the contracts were, it won't go higher than $2.49, but you know you're going to be hit with the $2.49 a lot more than what you're going to be hit with the $1.69, and then they want to give you a reason why, because they protect you and all that stuff.
Just so I can say, these are fixed prices.
These are fixed prices. These prices won't Now, the only thing that might change, we do actually, one of the things we actually pay tax on is, so we do pay some of the fuel tax, because they're federal taxes, we pay some, we don't pay at the same level of tax that individual consumers do, but we pay certain things.
Half that you take, yes.
You know, and so if the tax rate changes ever so slightly, that will adjust that ever so slightly, a half a penny a gallon or something, but nothing substantial.
It's probably within that 5%.
Oh, yes. Now, if we have 30 best days next year, so we're not driving school buses on those, I'm joking, joking, sorry, you know, we don't drive buses on best days. But, you know, if, if we have days of the calendar, you know, if you have snow days, if you have a terrible winter and they forget a bunch of days, obviously, we're not driving on those days, that could change things. You know, so if we had, if we grew, let's, I'll use a better example, if we grew by 500 students and had to add to report bus routes, you know, or more, that might change it a little bit, but based on what we've been doing the last several years, we, we would be, you know, very close to what we would spend on diesel.
It gives us a year, and it's either going to be good or it's going to be bad, but we're locked for a year. Now, after that year, the election's over, we'll see if it's bad or it's good. In fact, I wished it'd lock a two-year, but
But they're not going to do that.
Well, we're talking about $1.83 change and $1.82 change.
See, I think that's pretty good.
Well, I'll take it $4, I'll fill my tank up for
Well, but here's the thing, on, on, what'd you say, 150,000 gallons?
150,000 gallons.
If you got one more penny, look what you do.
I know it. I know.
Kind of willing to deal with more. So
I'll try it again, Larry.
I like that one. I want to say, Tim's been on, I've walked past Tim's office about 700 times in the last four days, and he's been on the phone 98% of the time.
And, and I'll be honest, I heard you say, what, what was the other price index that you used to look at?
NYMEX.
No, yes, Opus. So you looking at that every day, comparing it to invoices, I'm, I'm thinking that that's, to me, wasted time of your time.
I mean, I'm glad to do that.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I'm glad I minded it all.
I know. I'd rather have you being the brain of the financial health of the district than having to deal with the Opus index every day, so.
We started doing that many years ago, because we found it would be all charged.
I know, yeah. And that's greatly appreciated that you were doing this.
Is, is that locked in for the 150,000? If we go 151, screws everything?
There's, there's a little, I, I almost had to go back to my email notes from the folks at Petroleum Traders, there's a little bit of a buffer there.
Okay.
There's a little bit of a buffer on their exact terminology.
Like the Ford plant's going to build a little thing out, or one of them, and they're building it here, so if you do have to add another route, which is another bus, that, now you're going to go over that 150,000.
There, there is a buffer there. I think it's a 10% either way. I'd go back and check that.
15,000 gallons.
Yeah, so we've got, because I asked that question, okay, what if our, our bus guys over here figure out a way to make these things get 15 miles a gallon? Are you going to send me an invoice at the end of the year for the 10,000, 20,000 gallons I didn't use? The answer is no, there's that, it's, it's, there's a clause in the contract that allows for that. Don't remember the exact language, but we are covered there, a little either way.
If we think about 10%, our buses run nine months, so 10%, we're talking about a whole nother month of running, is the buffer, right?
Right.
Well, I was going to think about too, that, you know, in the summer months, when usually your, your gas prices are generally, I think, the highest, we won't have as many buses on, we have some, you know, throughout the summer, we don't have the whole fleet.
We've got that new thing that's checking where the buses are going anyway.
It's a...
I'll make a motion that we go with the fixed-price contract for this upcoming year. Now, does it start on the fiscal year?
July 1st.
Okay, so for the July 1st, 16 through June 30, 17 fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
This is with the same company, correct? This is the third year of the same company, correct?
Yes. Next year, we will not be... We can't.
I just want to make sure.
We'll have to go back to...